Everyone, we will, if I can have everyone's attention, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, Council Study Session for June 28th, 2022. Want to get us started on time so that I know that this is an important topic, couple of topics that we need to get through. It is June 28th, 2022, Gilbert Town Council, Council Study Session. We have two items on our agenda. The first one is the discussion on WW 1060, WW 1246, WA 1546, Western Canal Corridor Analysis, and I would like to invite Jason Montgomery to the podium.
Thank you. Is that better?
Better.
In early 2021, following numerous early discussions on the scope of WW 1060, the overlapping efforts associated with WW 1246 and WA 1546, and recognizing the significance of the infrastructure and complexity of this area, council directed staff to complete a corridor analysis from Lindsay Road to Gilbert Road to take a comprehensive approach and proceed as thoughtfully as possible. Phase 1 began in May 2021 with nTelis arriving at 10 options. During the review, it was identified that only four of those options were allowable by SRP due to restrictions with Bureau of Reclamation property. During, that was presented at a public meeting in November of 21. Following that meeting, a fifth option was developed based on some feedback we received from the residents, and that brings us to present day where we have five options for consideration for this corridor. Within this presentation, we will discuss the existing conditions of the Western Canal and town and SRP utilities. Martin will then provide an overview of the options we've considered and the associated cost estimates. We'll then close with the next steps for this effort. So as previously discussed, this is the area where completing a corridor analysis along the Western Canal from Gilbert Road to Lindsay Road, where we have three critical pieces of town utility infrastructure. Within this video, you will see where these utilities lie within these 24 residential properties, the five options that you're going to see tonight, the variations really occur within those 24 residential properties. So the 36-inch sewer depicted by the green line and the 18-inch reclaimed water pipeline shown by that purple line were both installed in 1986 within a 25-foot town utility easement. The blue line you see there represents the 24-inch potable water line which was installed in 1991, and that exists within the Western Canal right-of-way by revocable license with SRP. It travels through a town of Gilbert property and then through three residential parcels as it approaches Lindsay Road. So first to touch on WW 1060. This project was developed to complete an assessment and rehabilitation of 10,000 feet of 36-inch and 24-inch sewer pipelines and manholes within and adjacent to the corridor. The segment of 36-inch pipeline that runs through this corridor is a critical element of the wastewater system in the north part of town. This figure shows the service area which serves approximately 16,000 homes, delivering a significant amount of the town's wastewater by gravity flows to the Neely Water Reclamation Facility at a rate of approximately 3 million gallons per day. I'm going to ask Ken Snow to touch on a recent event that occurred at this location.
Thank you, Jason. In the photograph, you'll see a picture of a manhole that's located within Free Stone Park, and we had a blockage occur just upstream of this manhole. We were fortunate that this blockage was able to be cleared where it was. We were one manhole away from being within this constrained corridor, which means we would have, we would be challenged in getting our trucks in there in order to clear this blockage. This manhole is 19.6 feet deep. That, you can see in that photograph, we're about three feet from the surface. That means that the north side of Gilbert was surcharged with about 16 feet of sewage underneath the ground. This was a, this was a stressful situation from an operations perspective, and we were very fortunate that we were able to clear that blockage and restore service before we had a sanitary sewer overflow, in particular into one of the town's parks.
So in 2017, as well as last fall, a condition assessment was completed on this 36-inch pipeline along the canal and also the 24-inch pipeline and manholes going up to Guadalupe. The segment of 36-inch that runs through this corridor was deemed as, using industry standards, as "poor with immediate attention in the near future" and "failure imminent." So you can see the yellow and the various colors relate to the legend there, which, which using standards deemed that condition. So based on the condition assessment that was completed five years ago and also last fall, it is the recommendation to proceed with rehabilitation of that 10,000 feet of pipe and 22 manholes by cured-in place pipe in the existing location. Prior to lining that pipeline, a significant bypass will have to be installed to allow for active sewer flows to be dealt with during the lining activity. We will also have to complete spot repairs for any failure locations that might exist prior to lining, and we will be rehabbing those manholes by placing inserts within the existing manhole, all prior to the lining activity. Project WW 1246 was developed to complete an assessment and rehabilitation of the 18-inch reclaimed water line along this same alignment. This pipe works in conjunction with the sewer. After the wastewater is treated at the Neely Facility, it is then sent out using this pipeline and delivers approximately 6 million gallons per day for irrigation or being recharged at the riparian. You can see the service area highlighted here. As part of this effort, we had Archer Western Construction cut a piece of this asbestos cement pipe out and send it in for laboratory testing. The location that we took this sample was just east of Burke Street, and Ken's going to touch on what those lab results are telling us and the division's approach for rehab of this pipeline.
Thank you again, Jason. The Crush and Fennel stain tests identified that we have good strength in that pipe and the degradation is acceptable for the given pipe's age, that we have some flexibility in our schedule for replacement of the pipe. There are, as previously discussed, other issues with asbestos concrete pipe. It's very difficult to work around. It is sensitive to temperature changes, is sensitive to pressure changes, which a reclaimed water system does have, and is sensitive to disturbances of adjacent construction. For example, the rehabilitation of several manholes and the pipeline that's directly adjacent to it. We will continue to program AC pipe replacements mirroring a similar program with our water division, so that we will have continued prioritization and planned replacements of this pipe. It is a, it is important replacement, but is not urgent immediately. Thank you, Jason. We wanted to highlight a connection, a modification that was on our system that we did not detect initially. This, we were responding to a leak and found a modification on our pipe that does not serve the design intent. This represents operational risks for us from a operations perspective and in the health, safety, and welfare of the public from the perspective of a utility. This is something that can happen when we don't have access to those utilities. Thank you.
So considering the division's approach for this 18-inch reclaimed pipeline, the immediate recommendation through this corridor analysis and for this utility is to complete some immediate improvements as part of the immediate project, which is installing some additional valves, drains, and air release valves just to increase the operational flexibility, and as Ken mentioned, programming out that future effort to eventually rehab or replace this 18-inch line, and that will likely occur during our FY '24 CIP update. So the third project along this corridor is WA 1546. Between September of 2021 and April of 2022, we completed some immediate improvements to this, to this pipeline. This is a critical pipeline that travels from our North Water Treatment Plant all the way to Cooper Road, serving a significant portion of the northwest part of town, approximately 11,000 homes and 15% of the town's residential services with the service area depicted here. Within that effort of WA 1546, we completed two types of condition assessment. One being a leak test you see in the picture there on the left. The other method was to complete some electromagnetic technology using a robotic platform from within the pipe. The assessment effort was able to pick up three areas along the alignment where failure was imminent due to corrosion and loss of the steel cylinder. One location identified by this technology was within this corridor area just east of Gilbert Road, in between the Western Canal and that north irrigation ditch. This pipe experienced 100% wall loss in numerous locations and was likely to, prone to failure once placed back into service. This location, as well as the other two that were identified, were able to be repaired prior to this line going back into service. To provide some context to how dire this situation could have been, this is the same pipe material and diameter to the pipe that recently failed in Tempe on the US 60, causing shutdown of that freeway and discharging approximately 8 billion gallons of water before it could be shut down. A failure at this location could have resulted in significant damage to the Western Canal, to our town utilities, SRP facilities, and the adjacent properties. So there is not any additional immediate rehabilitation needs for this 24-inch pipeline. As part of WA 1546, we've installed numerous access points along the alignment from Cooper all the way to the North Water Treatment Plant, and that's going to provide us the ability to complete additional assessments in the future and really allow for us to plan and include these in long-range planning for this utility. So now, just to touch on some of the SRP facilities that exist within this corridor, as you can see here, we have the Western Canal as well as that north irrigation ditch. We also have two sets of electrical transmission towers, a 230 KV on the north side and a 500 KV on the south. You can see within that orange hatch area, that is the extent of the existing SRP easement, which runs right up to our town easement and north in many of those areas. The area I just showed, highlighted in red, this shading represents land for the Western Canal right-of-way, which is owned by the federal government, intended strictly for Bureau of Reclamation purposes, meaning irrigation, water, and power. As I mentioned, our 24-inch potable water line exists within this area by a revocable license through SRP. That was approved over 30 years ago when it was a much different environment from a right-of-way congestion standpoint and likely wouldn't be approved in present day. Approved municipal uses for this right-of-way is access, crossings, and multi-use trails. So just to focus in on the properties west of Burke here, this is a typical location trying to provide some perspective as to where our town utilities exist and where the easements exist. So you can see the 36-inch sewer depicted by the green line, the 18-inch reclaimed water line depicted by the purple. The town easement is shaded in green with SRP's easement being 36 and a half feet going right to the north edge of our town easement. Here's a cross-section of that same area, and we wanted to provide this just to provide some perspective as how truly congested this corridor is. You see you have the SRP facilities with both sets of transmission towers, our 24-inch potable water straddling the two canals and towers, and then you see the other two utilities on the right side within the 25-foot town easement and the property line depicted there by the red dash line. So this figure, we want to, we want to show a little comparison between when the 36-inch sewer and 18-inch reclaimed water lines were installed in 1986 and compared to 2016. So the top picture is when they were installed in 1986. The lower picture is 2016, and you can see a stark contrast of the obstructions that existed within the easement. When the Village 2 subdivision was developed, they had their walls installed at the north edge of our easement, which is also the north edge of the SRP easement, and fast forward 30 years, we now have some significant obstructions created within that easement area. Decisions by numerous parties have led to these obstructions within the easements. This is just to provide some perspective on what the easement documents entailed. So the easement within this area west of Burke was granted via a separate easement document at the time of construction, providing that 25-foot easement 11 and a half feet north of that south property line. Now we're going to focus in on the typical location east of Burke, between Burke and Lindsay. You can see here, similarly, the sewer depicted by the green line, reclaimed water with the purple, and the potable water line is shown here in the blue, with both SRP's easement in the orange hatch and the town easement in the green shading. And as you see, SRP easement extends north of our easement in this location. Similarly here, here's a cross-section of that same area showing the congestion once again with that lattice tower and the foundations for those, for those, for those tower legs, and then you see the 25-foot town easement, which is approximately 21 feet into those residential properties in this location with the property line shown with the red, red dash line there. The easement for the Casey Ranch 2 subdivision was actually dedicated to the town on the plat map. I'm sure it's hard to see, but you can see that 25-foot easement there on the south area of those parcels. For the three parcels east of this Casey Ranch subdivision, all the way to Lindsay, this was dedicated to the town under a separate easement document, providing that 25 feet of easement through those parcels. So that brings us to present day. We have five options that we have worked through with the analysis that we'd like to go through some, a video and really convey those to council and allow everybody to consider those and weigh those options. Martin's going to go ahead and discuss those five options and run through a video for us.
Thank you, Jason. Again, as Jason mentioned, we have arrived at five options, four of which are carryovers from the Phase 1 analysis, and the fifth being a, an offering from the residential community. So again, to just quickly walk through the different options and the different aspects of each option and how each might affect the corridor or individual properties, we've prepared a video that was developed from an interactive map that, that we created for the entire corridor, which clearly shows the impacts that each of the five options have on each property and the corridor in general.
This video provides five options currently considered for Western Canal Corridor Analysis. The video reflects the final condition of each option. After conflicting structures have been relocated outside of the easement area and construction has been completed, this video is intended to provide a detailed presentation of each option and is not available. The present location structures, utilities, walls, fences, trees, and existing units are crossing and will be moved nearby once an option is selected and detailed design is. Within this, the three existing town utilities are shown on the orange solid lines, with the green line representing 36-inch sewer pipeline, the purple line representing 18-inch reclaimed water pipeline, and the blue line representing 24-inch potable water. The dashed line represents the existing sound property line of the residential assets, and the gray area represents the crush of maintenance road. Option 1, require adjacent feet. Option 1 proposes to acquire the existing utilities in the feet. The proposed access channel from the north of the existing 25-foot town utilities were then featured in the video to the sound property lines, delivering much of the downstream line. The windows area is 36 and a half feet of property residence through 333, averaging approximately 21 feet in most parts of the 333, and is marked with a green indication of the process. All structures that exist within the easement area would need to be relocated to allow construction activities. The video reflects all conflicting structures relocated to the north by shifting the entire existing structure outside of the access area within the process setback. A five-point area of such need is necessary north at the facility area to construct a new gate with tall wall within the residential property. Currently, pedestrian access is not allowed in the town. The location signs and details will be developed by detailed signing through collaboration with the property. The existing 36-inch sewer pipeline and manholes will be relocated in the north by lining and manholes. The existing 18-inch reclaimed water line will be used through isolation valves to increase operation flexibility. The existing 24-inch potable water line will be utilized in the east end corridor to minimize access area. A crush of maintenance will be solved on the corridor. Some factors were considered in option 1 are, this provides for accessing this building and putting in town utilities within its operations. A prominent utility for all of the land is, has been delivered by SRP and also launched by all five options. Option 2, utility corridor out. Option 2 proposes to create an alley within residential parcels to allow continuous access through the corridor. To achieve this, we need to install both sides of the tarso and block all three structures outside of the east, west, and sound property lines to create an alley. These values allow the tarso to maintain security and privacy, but allows access within the easement by town staff. Locks will be installed and intended strictly for town use. All structures that exist within the easement area will need to be relocated to allow construction activities. The video reflects all conflicting structures relocated to the north by shifting the entire existing structure outside of the easement area. To afford options for the lower edge of the easement, we've developed two variations. One, the visual barrier, such as chain fence to prevent implosion to the easement and a security barrier for the town. Another option is to do the visual barrier, such as the concrete curb, to identify easement and provide assistance for the area. However, the visual barrier does not permit future easement coverage. All protection of the alley is remaining access. Pedestrian is currently shown on the south wall of each park. The potential sound facilities, as well as location, size, and details of the case, would be developed by detailed signing and through collaboration with the property. The three options we have released of course would require acquisition of a piece of the lead, identity to the total of the option 1 due to the name of the easement, which is not allowed operation in the alley due to the narrow of the easement. The existing notice statements for pipeline and manholes will be rehabilitated in place by lining and manholes. The existing 18-inch reclaimed water line will be used through isolation valves to increase operation flexibility. The existing 24-inch tall wall will be rerouted on the east end corridor to minimize alley area and an easement supposed to protect land rights within the 3D to the process. A crush of maintenance will be solved in the alley over the easement area. Some factors to consideration are two more. This provides us with utilities for alley within its operations. Has been located earlier with SRP, minimizing access. Potential breaks in this area along the north end to east end within the backyards, and utilities continue to operate within residential apartments and behind walls. Option 3, minimal acquisition at manholes. Option 3 proposes to acquire the existing feet only around the existing manholes to allow access to the sewer manholes from the canal, either Western Canal or town property. This will provide areas that are too large in its activity to be used. The block wall will be configured around the access area. Two variations of the wall orientation have been developed, an angle out to provide minimum area of access and maintenance tools, and a strength off if a property owner refers to the name regularly shaped wall in their backyard. The existing 24-inch tunnel in the canal will be placed within a pipe to allow town vehicles to access these areas. All structures that exist within the easement area would need to be relocated to clear the easement and allow access along the remainder of the line. The video reflects all conflicting structures relocated to the north by shifting the entire existing structure outside of the easement area. As with the previous options, the existing 36-inch sewer pipeline and manholes will be rehabilitated in place by lining and manholes. One manhole will be relocated as part of this option to consult the access area at one option instead of across two. The existing 18-inch reclaimed water line will be used through isolation valves to increase operation flexibility. At this time, no issue will be required for 24-inch potable water. However, easement needed to protect land rights within the 3D to the process. A crush of maintenance will be solved in the access channel. Some factors to consideration are option 3 and all. This provides terminal access to sewer manholes for maintenance operations. Has been located earlier with SRP, minimizing access to the access area compared to option 1. Access to reclaimed water will be secured outside of the access area remaining set, and the utilities continue to operate within residential backyards. Option 4, based on the grounds. Option 4 proposes to leave these properties because of its massive gates at each of the doors that have existing manholes within their properties. This allows access to manholes to maintenance operations. A double-take or slightly redesigned with the south block wall and addition of eighteen-gates. These massive gates will be accessible by town staff for maintenance purposes with locks installed and intended strictly for town use. The existing northerly SRP canal will be placed within a pipe to allow for town vehicles to access these areas. All structures that exist within the easement area would need to be relocated to clear the easement and allow for access along the remainder of the alignment. The video reflects all conflicting structures relocated to the north by shifting the entire existing structure outside of the easement area. As with the previous options, the existing 36-inch sewer pipeline and manholes will be rehabilitated in place by lining and manhole inserts. It's important to note that in order to complete the sewer lining and manhole rehabilitation activities, much of the existing block walls will need to be demolished and reconstructed in order to provide adequate access during construction activities. The existing 18-inch reclaimed water pipeline will be improved with new isolation valves to increase operational flexibility. At this time, no additional improvements are required for the 24-inch potable water line. However, an easement is needed to perfect the land However, an easement is needed to perfect the land rights within the three easterly parcels. The area between the proposed gates and existing manholes would need to have a stabilized surface to allow for town access with further details to be developed during detailed design if selected. Some factors for consideration on option four are, this provides increased access to sewer manholes for maintenance and operations, has been preliminarily approved by SRP, minimizes land acquisition, utilities continue to operate within residential backyards with limited access and visibility, and town staff is required to coordinate entry into residential parcels for any maintenance activity. Option five, gates to manhole parks and reclaimed water line. Option five is a duplicate of option four where access gates will be installed properly for manholes with the addition of relocating existing eighteen inch reclaimed water line outside of the Western Canal and into the streets. Due to the speed of the pipe, there is potential for the opposite relocation, whereas this sewer, radicating, does not allow relocation. This option will reduce the availability of soil by delivering one degree to a specific concern. Install the eighteen inch pipeline and develop streets posed to most challenges in design and construction due to jetty widening and complications with existing tow accounts, traffic, and roadways to business. The corridor analysis indicates a lack of visual threat and existing utilities to firm its goal, however, would require a six inch sign. All old reclaimed pipelines will be relocated outside of the corridor. This does not require an option to relocate existing thirty-six inch sewer pipeline in existing tow easement due to the block of the reclaimed water pipeline, potable water pipe, and SRP facilities. All structures that exist within the easement area would need to be relocated to the easement and allow access along the remainder of the line. Some factors for consideration on option five are, this provides increased access to sewer manholes for maintenance and operations, has been preliminarily approved by SRP, minimizes land acquisition, removes one utility of the corridor. The sewer and old water continue to operate within residential backyards with limited access and visibility, and town staff is required to coordinate entry into residential parcels for any maintenance activity.
Again, so this video was developed from a 3D interactive rendering that was created for all five options for the entire corridor that'll be made available to the public to navigate through as they desire and kind of better understand and get a feel for the actual impacts and construction sequences that we're proposing for each option. Just to quickly show some of the abilities of the tool, you can have the perspective of looking from the corridor at the properties for each of the five options. You can also look from the vantage point of each property onto the corridor and see the impacts again there. And we've developed construction sequences with the help of the contractor, Archer Western, to show exactly what the impact might look like during construction for any of the five options. And on each one of these construction sequences, for example here for option one, you can click on the information icon there and it'll pull up the additional information of what's going on and what are the impacts for each option. Jumping to the cost estimates for each of these five options, with significant help from the contractor, again Archer Western and TFC helped develop very detailed cost estimates for each of the five options. I should note that these costs are only inclusive of estimated construction cost and land acquisition costs and don't include any other soft costs or other project costs that may be associated. So you can see here, option one, twenty point five million, two, eighteen points five million, three is sixteen point nine million, four, sixteen point three million, and option five, the most expense is twenty-one point five million. We also thought it prudent to show the difference in our previous cost estimate during phase one to kind of highlight the reality that's happening right now in the construction real estate market, mostly due to supply chain shortages and other COVID-related impacts and inflation. So as you can see here, from twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, on average, the costs have escalated about twenty-two to thirty-two percent. And I'm gonna pass it back to Jason here.
So the next steps in this process are, everything we've shared tonight will be made available on the project website, so we'll have the presentation, the video that was shared this evening, as well as that options viewer that Martin was just running through. Also, the ability for anybody that's interested to provide feedback to the project team that will go live tomorrow, and I will send out an email with that link to interested parties as well. Going forward, the next step in this process is to select an option for this corridor. We are tentatively scheduling this to put on the agenda for the August ninth meeting, so you'll have between now and then, if it's appropriate, to place on that agenda at August ninth to review the information that's provided on the website. Following selection of that option, we'll have to go and develop a further scope with our engineer, CMAR, and PMCM for the option that's selected, and then of course proceed with that detailed design, any land acquisition or easement as appropriate, and then update the budget within this FY twenty-four CIP update this fall. With that, we're open for questions.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions from members of the council? Councilmember Kapowski?
Thank you, Jason, for your work on this project. I just had one clarification question. You mentioned the eighteen inch reclaimed water line may have some work in the future as well. Would that work be combined together with sewer line work?
So it really depends on which option we go with. We know we want to complete some immediate improvements as a bare minimum to install those additional valves. It depends on the option that's selected, when we want to take advantage of the construction window, and also it really depends on the budget that's available for the wastewater replacement funds as well. So that would have to be obviously discussed depending on the option with OMB, with the wastewater division, and really see what their recommendation is to go forward.
Thank you. I would just hope to look towards minimizing those construction impacts within a shorter period of time.
Any other comments or questions from the team? Jason, thank you for the presentation. I know we've been talking about this project or these projects a lot. We've met and done individual one-on-ones with you and the team, or two-on-ones with you and the team so that we could get further detail on all of these options, and the video really is very helpful, and the interactive tool has been extremely helpful from my perspective in being able to actually see exactly how each of these residents would be potentially, how this would affect them, and how our water lines would be affected by each of those choices also. And then, the one thing that has sat very heavy with me is the event that happened on the sixty and in Tempe, and watching how that was affected by a water line that we're talking is the same exact size under these residents' backyards at this point in time. And so, watching that occur at this point in time was very interesting, and seeing how it shut down the sixty for so long, when you think that that's such a large corridor over there, and the effect that it had on, and you mentioned eight million gallons of water before they could shut it down, was released. And so I think of something like that happening, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and we'll watch as this moves forward, and this council will have an option and a decision for you.
Thank you very much for the feedback.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Ken. Thanks, Martin. Appreciate your presentations this evening, and the whole team for being here. Jason's double Jason. Thank you for everything. Next on our agenda, talking about construction costs, is an overview of market condition impacts on projects and procurement mitigation tools and strategies, and I see Leah and Jean headed to the podium.
We have a presentation for you, so I think that's getting loaded.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm sure the screen will come back. All right. Leah Reinheimer, Assistant Town Manager, working with the Public Works and CIP teams, and I'm here on behalf of Susannah Struble and the CIP team to introduce the presentation. Susannah's with us virtually, but is still recovering from an illness, and so she's gonna be joining virtually. So we recognize that it has been a very long fiscal year, and really a very long several past years for everyone, for our community, for our employees, and for you, you shoulder the ultimate burden of leadership. So we're here tonight because we're trying to fulfill our mission of anticipating, creating, and helping people. So it's no secret that over the past couple of years, we've seen a tremendous amount of economic and global uncertainty and instability that has really impacted supply chains, as well as our ability to deliver goods and projects as well. So these impacts continue to become more and more significant, and the Gilbert team is working diligently to mitigate those impacts, anticipate them, and mitigate them to the best of our ability. As public servants, we understand that in navigating these challenges, before us, we have certain guardrails and a public trust that we must uphold. And so within our existing regulatory structure and within these guardrails, the team is going to now walk through several strategies to innovate and create solutions to mitigate some of the significant challenges that we're seeing, both from a supply chain and procurement perspective, as well as the impact on our capital improvement projects. So next slide, which is this. I didn't realize it. Now you have Jean.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're really excited to be here and share some of the hard work we've been doing to try and mitigate the challenges that this team has been faced. We're a team of problem solvers. We'd maybe go for a few fewer problems, but we do appreciate the opportunity to share some of those with you. It's no surprise to anyone that's had to go grocery shopping or has had to fill up their car lately that there are some significant pressures out there that are impacting our community. For the capital improvements team, along with our operations and maintenance teams, as well as our procurement team, these challenges are not particularly unique to any one of us, so that's why you see today before you a group presentation from this group. So you'll hear from myself, representing capital, as well as my two colleagues, Ryan and Jack, our procurement manager, Jim, as well as, we'll have a couple of slides speaking specifically to our operations and maintenance teams. So with that, just wanted to share, we feel like the three major areas that are driving project challenges fall into volatility, material availability, and escalation. We'll speak through each one of those a little bit more context and how those are impacting our projects and our efforts. So getting first into volatility, the graph on the left is the price of nickel since essentially March. So you see, leading up until March, that price was on a steady incline, but then March happened, and the core of that is actually the invasion of Ukraine. Nickel is a primary product out of Ukraine, and it is a core product that goes into stainless steel for us. So volatility is not just a matter of escalation, although that does generally provide upward price pressure. What we're really running into is the inability to predict the next price challenge. So we see these as falling into four major areas, leading from pandemic policies impacting the ability to get resources, travel, shutdown of facilities overseas, international unrest driving core material costs, that kind of is exacerbated by the invasion of Ukraine in terms of those material impacts, as well as general fiscal policy. The market is reflecting those challenges and how those people are investing those dollars, and it's changing our market environment. Availability, the slide on the left again, that graph is an index of a number of different challenges, but it kind of indicates the impact to supply chain on an order of magnitude basis. So you can see, again, kind of centered around that zero, then taken off in the last little bit. The three main areas that we see here are long lead time, that's if a material is even available. We're often finding that a material we've typically relied on being available is no longer in production, or if it is in production, it's ten, twelve, sixteen months out. Additionally, transportation logistics, we all probably remember the photo here on the right is a port of entry absolutely covered in container facilities. We can buy it, we can pay for it, but we can't get it here. So that's one of the challenges that we've been figuring out ways of approaching. And finally, escalation. This is probably the one that each one of us has felt differently, but acutely, on our own individual incomes, on our own individual bills. We see it as a combination of labor shortage, so seeing that fact that we don't have folks able to make those resources come to us, that's impacting that last mile delivery, those transportation components. Drivers to commodities, fuel price clearly has gone up, and at least for us on capital and for most of us out there, we're paying those bills directly. Often, we're paying them more than one time. You're paying them in terms of raw materials, delivery, and then for actually the installation costs as well. And then local dynamics. The city of Phoenix has partnered with a number of entities. We've partnered with entities. We've all had opportunities to develop these economic spaces, and the reality is, we have a lot of competing interests, whether it's housing, technology, or delivery, these components all kind of work together in order for this market to be particularly challenging. And so to get into the kind of specifics of how this is driving into capital, and we will share, it's not just doom and gloom, we do have approaches for each one of these projects and how we've mitigated these challenges. We'll start off with utilities projects nearest and dearest to my heart, but certainly not the most important projects out there all the time. We speak with volatility as an example. So volatility, as we mentioned before, there were two primary areas that we saw that drove our projects. The Ukrainian invasion, as well as general pandemic policies, and this turned into some direct pressures on a couple of pretty significant capital projects, and we'll show a couple of examples here. As I mentioned, with the Ukrainian invasion, that drove the price of nickel and raw iron up quite a bit for us, driving ductile iron pipe, stainless steel. But one of the things that's a little more nuanced is some of our key manufacturers of our critical utilities infrastructure equipment. A lot of that is manufactured in Europe, and those manufacturers are being impacted by their governmental policies to reduce their dependence on certain types of energy. So those manufacturers are now struggling to be able to guarantee delivery dates as they face those energy cutbacks. Additionally, on the pandemic side, the pandemic policies, travel restrictions have impacted our ability to do startup commissioning and error challenging. So as a new piece of equipment comes online, we bring in technical experts to make sure that it's operating the way we expect, but if they can't travel from Canada or Germany, we just can't have them here, so we've had to work through different alternatives. How this specifically translates, just since March, so between March and May, we've seen the cost impacts to ductile iron go up about sixteen percent, cost impacts to stainless steel go up about eighteen percent, but the bigger impact is the lead time. These were materials that were typically on the shelf, could pick them up today. Now we're seeing lead times that are tenfold higher. Again, back to that travel impact, we are limited on spare parts and our ability to deliver those forward. So two examples of how this has played out for us, as are exemplified here, project WA one five eight two, North Water Treatment Plant, South Reservoir, Water Quality Improvements. Council considered this contract at our most recent meeting on June fourteenth, and what we've seen, it was the price that was originally developed in two thousand and eighteen has seen up to four hundred percent escalation on key commodities. What this resulted in is capital improvements working closely with the water division and others to make sure that we had appropriately scheduled other projects around this project's dollar cost necessity, apologies for that, making sure that they had the resources they need to meet their goals, but having to reprioritize projects within the CIP. More specifically, on a current project as well, we are doing a deep look at our south manholes. We have split two large projects that are doing rehab on manholes within the town of Gilbert. We have approximately eighteen thousand manholes in our inventory. We are renovating each one as they come up as necessary. The typical method of doing that is by inserting a new manhole into the existing one, but those material costs, although they haven't gone up very much, we have seen a substantial change in the price of surface prep, which are a lot of those asphalt and plastic-based materials, as well as traffic control. The translation to that is, we can either do twenty fewer of the hundred and forty we had scheduled with this project, or we have to identify additional cost availability resources. As you folks know, we are also working on a project to reconstruct our North Water Treatment Plant. That project has the unique position of being the largest infrastructure project in the state of Arizona that is non-highway, and the largest single investment in clean water in Arizona history. This project therefore is uniquely exposed to, but has a deeper bench of tools in order to mitigate those. Those tools were developed at the beginning of the project and have continued to serve us well, but these are the kind of things that we're having to now deploy on projects that are, you know, not quite to that scale, whether it's project approach through setting early goals to establish value parameters using piloting, using new technologies, hiring our CMAR earlier, which means that they've been a partner through this process, and they've identified key trades that are being impacted by local conditions, as well as tracking the market. We're working on We're working on a price-based challenging tool that will actually track various major commodities in the market and show how that may translate into challenges on that project budget. With that, I'll pass it to Jack, who will speak with us on a couple of vertical project challenges that he's been up against.
Mayor and Council, Jack Guerra, Capital Projects. Currently, we have several key vertical projects in our capital program. They are all in different phases and stages. Some of them are in the due diligence phase, inception, design, and construction. Some of them are, as you know, dispatch center, EOC, Emergency Operations Center, advocacy center, traffic operations center, or fire station for rebuild. One of them is MF053, which is Muni 1 renovation, which happens to be in the construction phase, close to 75, 80% completion. And we thought this would be a great example to present in terms of the availability, cost escalation, supply chain issues. There are a lot of line items on the slide, different trades, different materials impacted. Keynote from this slide is huge challenges with concrete availability. Smaller batches are even more difficult because they are on a lower priority. In terms of contractors, how we manage that, steel has been, is, and probably will be a major challenge in terms of cost and availability. Technology, you will be hearing about it across not only vertical projects, but also horizontal, any traffic control components and things like that. Any MEP, Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, HVAC components. So there are many others, door finishes, all are impacted. Some of the aspects or mitigation approaches which we utilize, very consistent also with horizontal projects, vendor relationships. We really count on those a lot. To be more specific, what we do, we involve general contractors, highest level management and leadership, in terms of helping, providing all resources to the project, as well as, on many occasions, happen on MF053, we work with the contractor to help lower or even forego, in some instances, markups such as fees and general requirements or conditions. Obviously, we may have to pay taxes, bond insurance, on items which we edit scope and they are, of course, comfortable with. Other approaches we utilize, not our favorite, but we come back and request for additional contingencies. Also, we manage contingencies, and we have to be even more strategic in terms of how we plan those contingencies, in terms of being very specific for what item, what event, and what risk. Also, we utilize all available procurement methods. Co-op agreements became very popular recently with Jim helping us, and that really is very helpful. Jim may explain it a little bit more. We change products. If product is not available, we work with our vendors, architects, engineers, engineers to replace the product for equal, as to not compromise the integrity of the project. With that, I would transfer to Aya. Thank you.
Ryan Blair, CIP Supervisor, Street Transportation. So as you can see here, as far as transportation projects are concerned, one of the biggest challenges we've been having, as you've probably heard this throughout this presentation, is concrete prices up 50%. Availability of concrete's difficult. You can't get large pours, you have to get small pours, and so frustrating on that. Asphalt price is up 35%. Traffic signals up 48%. And lead times have increased from, as you can see in the presentation, 12 weeks to 24 weeks. Concrete pipe up 50%, cost escalation 40%, increased lead times. Same thing with our PVC water lines and DAP, cost is up 200% with 30% long lead items. So as you can see in the below, we're, this is a project, TS 1947, Val Vista Mill Rose Traffic Signal. As you can see, on a normal year, and this is actually a project where we would have been charged $67,360 for this particular long lead item contract, is now $99,512 for the current price. So that's what we're seeing right now. And as Jean mentioned, even more important is the long lead items, of trying to get these products in in time to have construction. So our mitigation, what are we doing to mitigate this? So currently, with our JOC, our job order contracts, our alternative delivery method that we're currently using on this project, we were able to use the current unit prices, instead of inflating the unit prices to our current market condition right now, we were able to use our current prices of where they were and then add additional line items just for material. So if the market does come back down, then we don't have inflated unit prices, which are always more difficult to come back down once you bring them up higher. So that's something we're trying to mitigate right now, of bringing our job order contractors and our CMARs onboard much earlier than we would have anticipated to try to be ahead of the curve.
Sorry. Good evening, Jim Campion, Purchasing Manager. Where did I go? I apologize. Yeah, I think we are out of order on our slides here, but I'll find where I'm at. You got this one?
Yeah, well, sorry about that. This is the challenge of collaborative presentations, is I can't just make up that I know what I'm doing. All right, so rolling back here a little bit, so I did mention this was a collaborative presentation between our team within the engineering group doing CIP for our operations and maintenance groups, but also, they are similarly challenged, and a couple of big issues for them that we'll go through here. One of the first is that vendors, as a result of these market conditions, are no longer allowing us to order something and then wait to payment until that item is delivered. That is unfortunately, as Jim would probably be quick to make sure we're aware of, that is not in compliance with our typical code and our typical approach. We certainly cannot buy an item and then pay for it before we've received it. So with that, we're using our various contract mechanisms to use our JOCs and our CMARs, which allow us to facilitate that payment while protecting the town's interests, making sure that that material is delivered and is available. One of the other approaches, and you'll see this on a couple of these items, is pre-purchasing those materials and stockpiling them in an appropriate quantity and for those materials that have that appropriate shelf life. Additionally, time shift costs. So typically, when we would hire a contractor, we would hire them for the duration of the project at the beginning. We would not hire them for a little bit, and then hire them for a little bit, and then hire them for a little bit. But the challenge with doing it that way in this market is that those contractors are having to price in the full guess that they're making, and it is, frankly, it can be a guess, of their risk. And so what we're proposing to do for a lot of these is to break these projects into smaller pieces. So we order them to come out, they do the upfront work, we pay them for that work, we then send them out to do the next piece, materials procurement, they go ahead and do that, and then we price that labor in that piece when that time comes up, in lieu of trying to do payments instead of that. Also, that lack of critical inventory, you know, we're going to bring it up over and over again. We can do a lot of things to mitigate costs, but if we can't get the material, that's going to be an impact to the community. And the photo is a 16-inch PVC line. Thankfully, this is a pretty old photo, but this photo kind of gives you a sense of, if this material were to fail on us, that is not an insubstantial impact to the community. So again, we are identifying some of those materials. As we take one out of inventory, we go ahead and purchase a new one to put back into inventory so that we can keep these pieces of our infrastructure running day to day and not having that impact to the community. With that, now you got it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim Campion. I'm back. I'm the purchasing manager. I'm going to talk to you about maintenance, repair, and operations contracts, otherwise known as goods and services contracts. The biggest challenges we're facing are lead times, extended lead times, and availability. So police department recently experienced that. As you can see, pursuit-ready vehicles historically was four- to six-month lead time. They went 10 to 18 months. GM was limiting production to 10,000 units nationwide. So this item came before you on May 17th, and thank you, you passed early contingency so that we could place an order, and we have 23 Tahos on order. As I mentioned, the mitigation approach we used there, we had an early procurement process, we did a contract, and then the advanced funding through contingency requests. Fleet lead times, parts availability. Currently, we have 53 vehicles in fiscal year, 22 budgets awaiting delivery. So, and this is due to OEMs, original equipment manufacturers, having limited availability of parts. Our mitigation is, we had to do advanced purchases of supplies, especially on tires that have become, in order for us to sustain our inventory levels, especially on heavy truck tires used for fire apparatus and refuse trucks. IT facilities, lead time, parts availability. The IT department, you can see these lead times, they're extensive. We've had to do early procurements to start and making sure that we can get these, this equipment in earlier. HVAC, I wanted to point out, the commercial-grade HVAC units, eight-to-10-month lead time. Facilities is currently renting evapor coolers for fleet right now. We are, we're supposed to get those chillers in May, but now we're looking at August. Furniture and finishes, lead time issues. We have the same issue, lead time issues extensive, but through early procurement, interim rentals, product specification changes, and use of cooperative contracts, we're able to locate products and furnishes, furniture and finishes for the building. One other thing on use of the cooperative contracts, I want you to know, we conduct extensive research on those contracts, and we look for product availability and the best cost. Also, on cooperative contracts, we do, they go through a competitive process similar to our town code, and we scrutinize those very carefully, working with the law department. Economic condition management. How do we manage this for goods and services? So one of the things we're doing is we're starting procurement processes well in advance. In some cases, we're starting procurement processes a year in advance. Enhance communication with current suppliers. We're in constant contact with suppliers, inquiring about availability and supplies. We award contracts to multiple suppliers in some case, so we have backups. In some cases, we had to cut back on frequency of service and revise scope of work to fit our budgets. As you saw earlier, we rent equipment temporarily, as in the case of the evapor coolers for the fleet department. And something we spend a lot of time doing is managing cost increase requests from vendors. We're constantly being asked to increase costs, but we have contract clauses built into our contracts so we can control those costs and limit it to CPI requests. Request advancement of funds with contingency requests, as you saw with fleet, and purchasing those Tahos have really helped the town. And as I mentioned, use of cooperative contracts to manage best pricing product based on availability in the market.
So with that, I did promise this wasn't all doom and gloom. We do have a series of strategies and plans that we deploy on all of our projects, but we're just having to pull more tools out of that toolbox. One of the most important things for us in CIP is cost, quality, and schedule, and we never want to have to choose one of those over the other two. And so what we're taking on is the same approach we would do on all of our projects, through detailed scoping, identification of materials, and all of the other components that we can. We're just doing it earlier, we're doing it more frequently, and we're allowing for more opportunities to do parallel design, to consider alternative delivery methods. In lieu of low bidding something today, knowing the material's not available for 10 months, and that contractor, for example, would then be pricing in that 10 months of uncertainty, we may use alternative mechanisms for bringing those forward to you for consideration, to bring those materials to hand, and then make the appropriate construction approach available at our recommendation and through our review. So we want to make sure that we said that there are options. This challenge is serious. It's probably one of the worst combinations of factors we could have possibly asked for, but in this case, we have come up with alternatives, we've come up with solutions, and we have to just do what we always do, but do it more, do it more often. So with that, we have our overall design and management approach presented herein. I talked to most of those items already. Additionally, a couple of new tools that we're developing in partnership within the capital team and with distinct inputs from legal and procurement to keep us all along with Title 34, which is our governing procurement process, as well as the town's procurement process. We're identifying a new contract vehicle for early procurement specific to our CMARs. So in addition to our standard pre-construction and our construction contracts, a mid-step contract that would allow us to just do procurement of materials, we're looking at additional construction phasing. And we are actually considering project timing, projects that can wait, might need to wait, as we look at opportunities to shift those projects to a better, more economically viable market. I wish I could tell you that my crystal ball worked pretty well. I'll tell you that I'm real nearsighted, so I can only look at the next little bit. And that's kind of the situation that we find ourselves in, and so we have to take these opportunities to pause, reflect, and consider if we're making the best out of the lemons that we're getting handed. We may not enjoy the lemonade, it may still be a little bit bitter, but it's definitely better than biting into it wholesale. With that, I think Leah's going to close us out here with how some of these items may come before you.
Thank you, Jean, and thank you to the team. They've been working really hard to really understand what's happening in the market and anticipate where we can go. So we've covered a lot of ground this evening, and the hope is that this information provides you with a solid foundation of understanding of not just the complexity, but also the turbulence that's impacting the market and our ability to procure and as well as to deliver projects, and the steps that the team is taking to stay nimble and adaptive to what's happening, of course, in financially prudent ways. We know that often you have to answer questions for why there might be cost escalation. There's no, I don't think anyone is a stranger to what's happening in the market with inflation and cost escalation, but not many people understand all of the nuances and how they're impacting these projects specifically. And so our goal is to give you those tools and that information. So going forward, what, you've seen some of this to date, and you will continue to see increased use of early procurement on projects, the utilization of job order contracting, also known as JOC, leaning on our construction manager at risk contracts, also known as CMAR. If things are moving a little bit more quickly, you'll see us coming with addenda to council agenda items, if there's something that's extremely time-sensitive. We had a moment a couple of months ago where we thought we were going to have to do that, but the team is incredibly innovative and creative, and they were able to identify alternative solutions. And then should we find ourselves in a situation where we'll need some immediate council action, the team will work with the legal department, as well as the town manager's office, to assess if a special council meeting may be in order, and of course, Patrick will be working with you on that. Under all of these scenarios, we want to assure you that the team will follow town procurement code, as well as ARS Title 34, to make sure we're staying in those guardrails that protect the public trust. If your reaction to this is one of concern, that is concern that is well-placed, however, we don't want for you or anyone else to be alarmed. The team is working diligently to track the market, to analyze all of the data, and identify what trends might exist, up or down, and work cross-departmentally on collaborative solutions. There's been an amazing synergy between finance and procurement, as well as CIP and public works, facilities, IT, everyone is working very collaboratively on all of this, and there have already been a number of successes in which the team's been able to proactively procure materials and mitigate some of the cost impacts. We just wanted to brief you because you will see more of this coming forward. And in the meantime, we will continue to focus on how we can secure critical items so that we can continue to serve and help our residents. With that, we will take any questions.
Thank you, Leah, for closing that out. Any questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Leah or Jean, did, when you presented the slide that showed the approach that we're going to take, that when you were putting that together, did you have the opportunity to survey other cities and towns and see what they're doing as we develop that approach?
Councilmember Anderson, I'll take a quick jump on that, and I'm sure Leah will have some feedback. We've been reaching out proactively, both to the public sector, our fellow cities, as well as to the private sector as well. A number of folks in this room are contractor partners, and they've gotten phone calls from me saying, have you seen a city taking on a new innovative approach? Is there a contractual component that we are not looking at, a tool we're not using? Even if it's from the private sector, we'd like an opportunity to review those items and bring them forward. And we feel that the strategies we're taking on probably represent the best combination of tools we've seen out there, although there are certainly more, and we will not hesitate to continue to investigate all those possible options. We, we're okay with We, we're okay with trying new things, so long as we do so within the guardrails that Jim and John and others within the town leadership provide for us, and providing that information for you folks, so you've got the information you need.
Councilman, on the goods and services side, I meet monthly with my procurement peers around the East Valley, and we compare notes and contracts, and we talk about opportunities, who has what, what availability, what are they struggling with. So it's very helpful. We meet with, as I mentioned, all the East Valley cities.
Thank you. Wonderful job. Very good.
Thanks, Mayor.
Just to piggyback on that, I think the organization has a pretty comprehensive idea of where all of our assets are, at least from a, you know, long-term planning standpoint, but just an inventory of some of these things you're describing. Do other cities have that? I think back when things get complicated, sometimes people go back to more rustic elements of our economies, like bartering, and know what other cities have that are, you know, in their inventory. Maybe it's kind of akin to like when you can't find beans on the shelf, you know, you ask your neighbor, well, I got a, you know, a bag of beans, and I'll swap you for some toilet paper. So is there any collaboration to kind of maybe look at that as jurisdiction to jurisdiction? That even makes sense?
Councilwoman Yentes, it's a great idea. I mean, it hasn't, we've been able to manage our inventory and for supplies, and, you know, one of the things that we do talk about is where are you able to access these products? And that's been really helpful, especially, as I mentioned, with my East Valley Procurement Group that I meet with monthly. We are able to say, hey, you know, I was able to get this over here, why don't you try them? And so we are able to do that. So we are putting some of that into place, but hopefully I don't have to get to the point where I have to borrow toilet paper again or anything like that. So, but yeah, it's something we're working on, and that meeting was put together, that East Valley Procurement Group was put together for that very reason, to compare notes and see what people are struggling to get and where they found sources of supply.
Just one quick, on the procurement side, obviously, some of the, some of the items, we're going to just have to try to, you know, exhaust their useful life and then find ways to expand their useful life. I don't know what departments are kind of the low-hanging fruit for all that, but just any thoughts on that?
Mayor, Council, one of the things that the team has done is worked very diligently on our long-range infrastructure plan, which inventoried all of our assets, whether it's pipes or buildings. And Marshall and the team put together a Facilities Condition Index, FCI, that gave us an understanding of where that's at in terms of degradation and the useful life that lies ahead of it to help us anticipate when to execute the repairs so that we're maximizing the dollars that we have at any given moment. So we're definitely actively doing that. And then in addition to your question, Jean's got a great example from a year ago where we had secured, in anticipation of some of the challenges, we had secured some pipe, which enabled us to do a turnaround time on a major water line repair.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So back in August of last year, you were briefed on a emergency project that came before us. We had a contractor that was working in our area hit our 36-inch transmission main that's immediately outside of our North Water Treatment Plant. That pipe is not one that you can simply walk into Home Depot and buy, although I wish you could, make my life a heck of a lot easier. But with that, we had pipe in inventory already, and we were able to use that pipe to make that repair and turn that repair around in under three days during August, which is a time period where the residents are using water because it is warm out. And with that, we also procured a new pipe at the same time that we replaced that one, and we made sure that the new piece that we had in inventory is an appropriate length for future repairs, as well as has a pre-installed manway. So we're trying to not only restock our inventory, but be more thoughtful about the inventory that we keep in place so that we can respond, and so that we can turn around those repairs pretty expediently. To your point, Councilwoman Yentes, we also had a challenge historically where we've had emergencies come up, and those projects have certainly limited our ability to get resources, and we are on the phone with our fellow communities, saying, hey, I know you're doing that big pipeline project through that community, can I spare a stick of pipe? It's a little more complex than going neighbor to neighbor for a cup of sugar, but we certainly have those pieces in place. Within the utilities group, there's a group called WARN, which Gilbert is a participant in, and that's the Water Area Response Network that allows us to do those exact things.
Councilmember Chukie.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you so much for the presentation. I think that it's well-timed in anticipating what we are dealing with and what we're going to see in the future. For me, I'd appreciate when these items come forward, that it, there's an explanation of why it's coming forward. So if it is a lead time or whatever the reason is, that just helps me better understand, and I don't have to send you an email asking, so maybe that would help. Also, I just want to, even though it's on our agenda, but a shout-out to Jean and her team. One of the items, I saw that we were able to save $960,000 because we reevaluated some things that we were doing. I don't have all the details, but I just wanted to say, congratulations. I know that you and the entire town staff are looking for those opportunities, and this just happened to come up today, so congratulations.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Leah, Jean, Ryan, Jim, Jack. We appreciate the presentation this evening. We appreciate the fact that times are tough and all of the measures that you are all taking on a regular basis. I know that this is normal for you and Gilbert, but I also recognize that you're going way above and beyond with the measures that you're taking at this point in time. So thank you. That was our final topic for our study session, so I will go ahead and adjourn our study session, and I'm going to ask for a five-minute break before we start our regular meeting.